Would someone like to make a motion to return the organizational board meeting back to public session, please? That would be Dr. McClary, is there a second? Mr. Bornstein, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. I would like to call the organizational board meeting to order. All board members are present except Dr. Banater and Mr. Mecca. Dr. Marzloff, would you mind leading us again, please, in the Pledge of Allegiance? You.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised that an event of a fire emergency and an evacuation should be necessary, an alarm will sound. Please note all the marked emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we do ask that you please silence your cellphones and any other electronic devices. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Mrs. Beeger, is there a second? Mr. Bornstein, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Mrs. Carey, would you please administer the ceremonious oath of office, please, to the new re-elected officials?
Yes, I will administer it if you would kindly step up. Mrs. Leatherbarrow, Mrs. Van Sis, and Mrs. Beeger to the podium. This is, has, was done formally prior to the board exec session. Mrs. Leatherbarrow was sworn in at 5:40 and Mrs. Van Sis and Mrs. Beeger were also sworn in at 6 o'clock. So this is just a readministration of the oath.
Okay, ladies. Raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me. I, state your name.
Suzanne Van Sis.
Teresa Anne Leatherbarrow.
Okay, okay. Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New York
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education member
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board of Education member
for the Williamsville Central School District
For the Williamsville Central School District.
according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you.
Congratulations officially. Are there any board acknowledgements for this evening? Mr. Meyer.
Very quickly, I just want to acknowledge our board president, Mr. Sean Lemay, who served us this past year. I think as a board, you know, we obviously don't always agree, sometimes very passionately disagree. And Sean has had to walk that tightrope and balance everything this past year. He's done an excellent job. He puts in a lot of time and effort, not just in terms of commitments as a board member and carrying out general board duties, but in terms of balancing and getting everything ready for us as board members. So Sean, I appreciate it and thank you, and you've done a wonderful job.
Thank you. Any other board acknowledgements? Dr. McClary.
I would just like to say that I, along with other people, had the opportunity to attend all three of the graduations this past weekend. And I want to commend Mr. Gordman of South, Mr. Thomas of North, Mr. Swatland at East, and all of their staff for just having flawless graduation ceremonies. And I know there's an awful lot of work connected with all that to make it look easy. So thank you.
Any other board acknowledgements? Mrs. Beeger.
At this time of year while we have students graduating, I was also fortunate enough to attend the retiree ceremony that took place a couple of weeks ago. So while people from the district do retire throughout the year, it was really a lovely display that the district put together to thank those people who've spent so many years of their career here in Williamsville and to hear the stories that were shared by so many, not just teachers, but people who are in the kitchen and driving the buses. It's just wonderful and gives you a really nice view and lens of everyone that works together to make this such a great district. So congratulations to all of those that are ending their career this time, too. Thank you.
Any other acknowledgements? Great, thank you, moving on. Mrs. Beeger, would you please read the board's public expression statement?
Sure. Welcome to all who have come to observe this regular board meeting. Thank you. Per Policy 1510, the board has set aside 30 minutes for public expression, a time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to three minutes in which to address the board. You will be signaled with a yellow flag at two and a half minutes so that you may conclude your remarks. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in a dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully and we take seriously what you have to say. I would also like to ask that you demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas, sharing your opinions, but not engaging in any personal attack. Thank you for your cooperation. We have one person signed up today, Crystal Kasmarak Bogner. Is Crystal here?
Yep, she's coming.
Oh, I couldn't see you.
Hi.
Thank you, hi.
Hi, good evening, I'm Crystal Kasmarak Bogner. Since July 2018, Ona Strang and I have been co-presidents of Williamsville Special Education Parent-Teacher-Student Association, also known as SEPSA. Unfortunately, Ona couldn't be here tonight, she had another commitment, but she did want to be able to speak as well, but I am speaking on both of our behalves. SEPSA was established in 1975. Our focus is on providing support, advocacy, and increased understanding for our students with special education and gifted programming needs in Williamsville Central School District. We have over 1,200 students in the district who receive special education services, over 1,200 students in the district who directly receive gifted programming services from our specialists, and all of our nearly 10,000 enrolled students are eligible for Level 1 gifted services. Membership in SEPSA is open to everyone. We provide six annual support and networking events, a minimum of six annual programs on topics related to special, gifted, or general education, which are all free and open to the public. Additionally, SEPSA educates parents, teachers, and students regarding individuals with special needs through a variety of written materials. We have a teacher and parent lending library, which is located in the Committee on Special Education waiting area, and we have also donated numerous books to the Williamsville School Library System and directly to our special education and gifted programming teachers. Given all that SEPSA does for our parents, teachers, and students, we were disappointed to discover that we are the only Williamsville PTA to no longer have a Board of Education liaison. Recently, we became aware of your discussion last July regarding the discontinuation of your SEPSA liaison, in part due to our lack of regular membership meetings. Like this Board of Education, our current SEPSA Executive Committee is committed to increasing opportunities for communication with our constituents and with the community. So in fall 2018, we implemented regular membership meetings. We had five over the past school year and have another five scheduled for the upcoming year. In light of this change, we hope that you will contemplate reinstating a SEPSA liaison to ensure that the Board of Education remains fully informed of the business and any district-wide concerns of Williamsville Special Education Parent-Teacher-Student Association. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak this evening? Okay.
Great, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to adopt the election process for the election of officers for the Board of Education as presented? Mr. Bornstein, is there a second? Mr. Meyer, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Mrs. Carey, would you please administer the election of the officers?
Yes. Would anyone like to nominate anyone for the election of President? Mr. Lemay, would you like to nominate someone?
I would like to nominate Teresa Leatherbarrow.
And Mrs. Leatherbarrow, do you accept the nomination?
I do, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other nominations for Officer of President? No other nominations? Okay, at this time, the nominations are closed. I will take a roll call vote for the election of Mrs. Leatherbarrow for Officer President. Mrs. Beeger. Mr. Bornstein.
Yes.
Mrs. Leatherbarrow.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Dr. McClary.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
Mrs. Van Sis.
Yes.
So total results are unanimous. Congratulations, Mrs. Leatherbarrow.
Can I say a few words?
Sure.
Okay. I just want to thank Mr. Lemay for his leadership. As was mentioned earlier, it's been a pleasure serving with you as Vice President. I think that we've been a great team and I've learned a lot from your leadership and your example. I have big shoes to fill. I am a parent first and an educator second. And living in Williamsville has been just so valuable to me and my family. We moved here about seven years ago from the city. And I love the city of Buffalo, but the education in here in Williamsville just doesn't even compare. So I promise to do the best job that I'm able to do. I feel qualified and ready for this position and I thank everyone for their support.
Moving on, for the election of Vice President. Would anyone like to put a nomination in for Vice President? Mr. Lemay?
I would like to nominate Suzanne Van Sis.
And Mrs. Van Sis, do you accept that nomination?
I do.
Any other nominations from the table? Okay, at this time, the nominations are closed. I will take a roll call vote for election for a Vice President. Mrs. Beeger.
Yes.
Mr. Bornstein.
Yes.
Leatherbarrow.
Yes.
Mr. Lemay.
Yes.
Dr. McClary.
Yes.
Mr. Meyer.
Yes.
And Mrs. Van Sis.
Yes.
I declare that Mrs. Van Sis is the Vice President for the Board of Education. Congratulations.
Please.
So I would just like to, just make a brief statement that it is with great pride that I was nominated for the Vice President role. I would like the rest of you to know, my fellow board members and Dr. Marzloff, that I take this role very seriously and I will continue to remain vigilant, vested, and committed in this district. I will continue to acknowledge that I am one of nine and represent the whole, as well as provide support in working together and in conformity. And I believe that, and I am confident that I can do a great job as Vice President, as I've shown over the past couple of years, about such leadership qualities of honesty and integrity, commitment and passion, of course, decision-making abilities and capabilities that we are tasked to do every month and sometimes every day. And lastly, my mission is that of the districts, which is truly to empower all students, working in partnership with staff, students, parents, and communities, while creating an environment of mutual respect and dignity. So for that, thank you very much.
And at this time, may I have Mrs. Van Sis and Mrs. Leatherbarrow at the podium to administer the oath for President and Vice President, please? So I'll do Mrs. Leatherbarrow first. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
Teresa Anne Leatherbarrow.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New York
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of President of Board of Education.
And that I will faithfully discharge the responsibilities, duties, of President of the Board of Education.
for the Williamsville Central School District.
For the Williamsville Central School District.
according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Wonderful. Congratulations. Okay, Mrs. Van Sis, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
Suzanne Van Sis.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New York
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And I will faithfully discharge the duties
of Vice President of the Board of Education
Of Vice President of the Board of Education.
for the Williamsville Central School District
For the Williamsville Central School District.
according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thank you. Okay, and at this time, I will also administer the oath for Dr. Marzloff, the Superintendent for the Williamsville Central School District. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, state your name.
Scott Marzloff.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New York
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
and that I will faithfully discharge
And I will faithfully discharge
the duties of Superintendent
The duties of Superintendent
for the Williamsville Central School District
For the Williamsville Central School District.
according to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right, we are on item nine? Per Policy 2220, I would like to appoint Dr. Susan McClary to serve as the Parliamentarian Timekeeper for the 2019-2020 fiscal year. Carey, do you accept that?
Yes.
Thank you. Mrs. Beeger, is this your water?
Thank you.
Want it?
Open it, yeah. They can stay.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we are on item 9B. Annual Appointments Approval. Would someone please like to make a motion to approve the annual appointment items 130 as presented? Mrs. Beeger, is there a second? Mrs. Van Sis, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I think we're voting on 1 through 30? Is that correct?
The annual appointments, yes.
Yes.
Not agenda items.
Okay, thank you for the clarification.
No problem. Any other discussion? Okay. I saw Mrs. Beeger motion to accept and Mrs. Van Sis second. All in favor? Okay, motion passes unanimously, thank you. Item 10, Annual Designations. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the annual designations as presented? Mr. Lemay, is there a second? Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Motion passes unanimously. Oh, your hand wasn't up, I'm so sorry. All opposed? Abstentions? We have one abstention. Motion passes. There's seven of us here, right? So 6, 0, 1. Item 10B. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the annual bank depositories as presented? Mr. Meyer.
Abstain from it.
Second. Mr. Lemay. Thank you. Did I get that right, Mrs. Carey?
Can we back up to, I'm sorry, 10A?
Sure.
Mrs. Beeger meant to abstain from 10B, so
Oh, okay.
10A, I have
Revote on 10A?
Sean is motion and Mrs. Beeger seconded the motion and just another vote.
Sure.
Passed unanimously.
All in favor again on 10A. Great, passed unanimously. Item 10B. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the annual bank depositories as presented? Mrs. Van Sis first, Mr. Meyer second. Is there any discussion on this item? All in favor? Opposed? Sorry, I was in approval. Abstention, one, thank you. So we have 6, 0, 1. Annual Authorization Policy Manual. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the policy manual and Board Doc's policies? Mr. Lemay, thank you, is there a second? Mr. Bornstein, thank you, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? No opposed, no abstentions. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Item 12, Annual Authorization. For 12A, would someone like to make a motion to approve the annual authorization of finances as presented? Mr. Lemay, thank you, is there a second? Mr. Meyer, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions. Motion passes unanimously. 13, Annual Authorization Rates. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the annual authorization rates as presented? Mr. Bornstein, thank you, second. Mr. Lemay, is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions. Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Keeping me on track here. Okay, item 14, Annual Authorization Designees. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the annual authorization for the designees as presented in your board packet? Mr. Lemay, thank you, is there a second? Mrs. Beeger, thank you very much, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions. Motion carries unanimously. Item number 15, Annual Authorization Bid Agreement. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the annual authorization for the bid agreement as presented? Mr. Bornstein, thank you, second. Mr. Lemay, thank you, is there any discussion? Great, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions. Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item number 16. Item number 16 is our Board of Education Liaison Guidelines. This has been turned into a discussion item. At this time, we will discuss the Board of Education Liaison Guidelines and Appointments for 2019-2020. If you look at the board packet, you can see that there is a draft proposal. And I just want to make a few comments on that before we open this up for discussion. So we know that in the past, last year, there was some discussion on possibly changing assignments. And we had some discussion about whether or not to continue assignments to all of the PTA units. We went back and asked the PTA units how they felt and the feedback was that they expressed their desire for school board members to continue to attend PTSA meetings. We know that attendance at these meetings is beneficial to us as board members because it provides opportunities for the Board of Education to have open communication with parents who are in attendance. I also want to say, though, that I believe that there has been some desire by board members, and I'll look and weigh in in a moment here, whether or not attending PTSA meetings allows us to really see the full work of the district and gives us opportunities for the district to showcase their work. When we attend meetings, my opinion is that current, the content that's being discussed is the PTSA content, which I think it's important to note that that is separate content from the matters and responsibilities that are of ours as our governance, which is that we as board members have a responsibility to govern and oversee the mission of the district and see where our budget money is going and those types of things. So I just want to open this up for discussion. And I'm actually really happy that this is a discussion item tonight and not an action item, especially since we had a speaker tonight express her interest in having there be a representative from the board at SEPSA in the future and that there's been some, I guess, little reorganization done on their part so that there will be annual meetings. So with that in mind, what are your feelings on this? Dr. McClary, yes, absolutely.
First of all, I would like to say that I definitely agree with the concept of working it so that we have an opportunity to have individuals designated for school events, working within the building, et cetera, in addition to PTA meetings. It gives us a more well-rounded view of our liaison responsibilities. The only, if we're looking at what would have been item, or document number two under this topic, where it says the Revised Draft of District-Wide Liaison Guidelines, I'm unclear of the wording in number four. And number four, it says communicate and schedule your school visits by emailing the building principal, PTSA president, board president, and district clerk prior to the September Board of Education meeting. That just isn't clear to me in terms of what meeting and what visit is that talking about? And it's between who and who and so forth.
Yeah, I agree with you about that language being unclear. I think that between this month and next month, if we were to decide as a governing body to change our guidelines in this way, that we would work on clarifying that language. I guess I'm more interested, first of all, deciding, do we want to change what we're currently doing? Or do we just want to change the guidelines? For example, before we revise them, the expectation was that we, as board members, are assigned with school and we make a commitment here at the reorg meeting to attend those PTSA meetings throughout the year. And that if we are not able to attend, that we do our best to find a substitute And that if we are not able to attend, that we do our best to find a substitute in advance and notify the president and the district clerk. We had some discussion last year about just making that a little bit more of a gray area, that we would keep everything the same, have, have someone be assigned to every school, but just not have the added pressure of, if you, you know, if you're unable to attend, perhaps then instead of finding a substitute, go and make sure that you just at least kindly notify the PTSA president so that they're not expecting you to show up at that meeting. So I think it's important that we decide going forward if we want to keep things the same or are we looking to make a change? Lots of hands coming up. I'm going to start at one end of the table and move down. So, Mr. Bornstein?
I think I understand why this is in here and I'm just wondering if we need to take it to this level of detail. Perhaps it's as simple as saying communicate and commit to your school visits to the district clerk at some point, rather than putting the onus on each of us to, to, to communicate with all these people and confirm it. Um, I'm happy, I'm happy to commit as soon as I know what the schedule is for the whole year and it would be, it would be appropriate for me to just let the district clerk know, for example.
Thank you, duly noted. Mr. Lemay, did you have your hand up before?
Yep, uh, I, I love this idea. Um, I think, uh, as board members, we should, uh, represent the schools, not just the PTSAs. Um, so I like the idea that we're going to be shifting potentially to be a school liaison instead of just the PTSA liaison. Uh, I think that's going to definitely open up, uh, a brighter range for more chances, more opportunities for communication with our parents and teachers and constituents and all of that, uh, without, uh, segregating and, uh, eliminating the, the lines of communication that we still have with the PTSAs. I do like the idea of putting a number on this and saying, you know, at a minimum of three PTSA meetings and two school events. Uh, I think my only question or concern might be on that line of number four. Uh, I do see reasons to let multiple people understand, but I, I think the commitment of the September board meeting might be a little of a, a, a stretch on that one, just, just for the reason that we may not know what the school events we want to attend yet at that point of the year. But as long as by the end of the year, we've attended at least a minimum of five of these, these, uh, occurrences as presented, I think this is going to be a, um, a welcomed improvement over the existing system. I think we're going to start to really get in touch with, uh, parents and, and even students, um, which we don't really do so much now. I, I think it gives us that opportunity. So I look forward to seeing this next month up for vote.
Mrs. Vansley?
So, and I also like, um, the minimum of three PTSA and two school events. For some of us, it's going to be a lot easier. Some of us might choose to attend, um, I will be attending every PTSA meeting probably, um, because both schools I'm assigned to, both my children go to. So, that won't change for me, but I think the important piece we need to discuss here is you do need to communicate with, with the principal and the PTA president because if not, um, I'm afraid board members will be accused of not showing up because this has been a past practice. So this is a change and with change, we know that we need enhanced communication. So it's going to be integral that this is communicated out, that our board has new guidelines in terms of representing at every PTSA meeting. Um, and instead, this is our, these are our new guidelines. So I think that would only be in our favor that we make sure, um, that that is put out there and set forth. And I believe that Mrs. Carey would also need to know, um, as soon as possible because I will even have to maybe decipher which of the PTSC, PTSA meetings are going to be considered my three, so that I also have my school reports or my liaison reports handed in. Because that would be another piece of communication that we need to follow up, especially as it's part of the guidelines and I believe it's part of our board goals. So we don't want to, um, lose sight of that as well.
Thank you, Mrs. Vansley. Mrs. Beeger or Mr. Meyer, did you want to weigh in on this discussion? Beeger?
Sure, I really like the idea of shifting our responsibilities, not just to meetings, but to events. So it makes sense not to, um, say we'll go to every single PTSA meeting and to school events. I think it's important in that communication piece, we don't want schools to feel like we don't want to be at the meetings. And we discussed this at length last year, that we do understand the importance of, um, being there to speak with parents, share what's happening in the district and hear what's happening at schools. Um, the purpose of this is not to take away from PTSA meetings, it's just to get a better understanding of the school culture at large. So, I think in that communication, that message needs to be there, that the spirit of this change is not to give us less to do, but in fact, to just help us to better represent the school and see what's happening, not just at PTSA meetings, but, um, within the school building. And I think that will give us a better understanding, even when we're sitting in PTSA meetings, they talk about organizing these great events, but then we hear the report on how it went. Now we'll, we'll, um, really be invited and have the opportunity to take part in some of these things. So that would be my only comment is in that communication to ensure the PTSA leaders know. As far as scheduling, I think it's a little tricky, um, to say by September, I will attend these three meetings. Sometimes something's happening in the district that it's really important for us to attend the next PTSA meeting to report on. And then other PTSA meetings, you go and you have the board notes, but it's really, um, not essential, there's not anything major to communicate. When we're getting closer to the budget and people have questions, that's a good time to be there. So I'm wondering if we can be more flexible, um, as far as when we schedule those and just know that our understanding is three PTSA meetings and that it's our responsibility to communicate with the PTSA president so they can put us on the agenda or, or know when we would be planning to go.
Thank you for your feedback. Mr. Meyer, would you like to weigh in?
Sure, so I'd just like to note a few things. I mean, one, I'll start with, that these are, these are really just guidelines. I think I, I agree generally with, uh, the comments that were made by Mr. Bornstein to a degree. I think we're overthinking it. Um, you know, the reality is life happens to everyone, including board members and, and in reality, the way it works is we all are designated to three or more of these and, uh, you can either make it or you can't. And if you can't, you have someone to sub in for you. I think these are really kind of overly particularized, uh, just for instance, on number eight, um, according to this, I guess after I go to one of these, I'm supposed to confer with the board president before I submit my school visit report, which I think is, uh, to be, speak blunt, I think that's a waste of time because it's my report, I'm going to submit it. So I think some of these could be Xed out. I think the general idea is, is clear to everyone, uh, go to your liaison commitments and if you can't, have someone fill in for you. So, I would support the kind of language that Mr. Bornstein came up with. And then lastly, just in looking at, uh, these appointments, I see that I was Xed out from south. Maybe I missed an email. Um, I don't, I don't recall having a conversation about that. That doesn't necessarily mean I'm, have a problem with, uh, taking on a different, uh, school or different assignment, um, but I don't know where that came from. But those are my comments, thank you.
All right, thank you for your feedback. I think these are actual assignments, some of them are copy and paste and then there was some discussion between, uh, Mr. Lemay and I with, uh, Mrs. Carey. But it was all sort of up in the air because we didn't really know how the election was going to go for board officers. So I think there's definitely some flexibility and I'd like to go back and sort of look through it too, just so that we are sharing responsibility evenly, distributing assignments evenly and so that we don't have one or two board members attending or being responsible to attend, you know, a lot more than everybody else. So just, we'll take a, we'll take a good look at that between now and our next meeting. Are you saying that you're open to taking another assignment?
Yeah, I'm, I'm willing to talk it out with whoever wants that particular assignment.
Okay.
You know, I just, I guess to me, I'm kind of surprised, um, just because I didn't, I didn't see it, at least in my initial look, so.
Right.
Um, if anyone wants it, we'll just hash it out and figure it out together.
Sounds good.
But I will throw out there, if we do have a liaison to, uh, SEPSA, I'd be more than happy to take that one on.
That sounds great. So we'll work on that. Um, I want to say too, that I, I kind of got this idea because I was the liaison for Dodge this year. And I made it to the meetings, I missed one, but I made it to the other ones. And I ended up developing a really good relationship with the people at Dodge, um, especially one of their co-presidents. And I was invited to come to their end of the year fun run. And, um, I'm not working anymore, so I had the, the freedom to be able to go, it was during the day. And I just found that experience, to be at their fun run, to be so valuable to me as a board member. It sort of like, uh, just made me realize like why I wanted to pursue board service to begin with, because I don't have little children of my own anymore, they're all, um, middle school, high school, and now graduate. So, it was just, it was so enjoyable to see the children and to witness everything that's talked about at these PTSA meetings actually go into action. And I actually had the opportunity to speak with quite a few more parents than I would have at the meetings. Because if we're being honest, the same people come to the meetings each month, right? And sometimes it's, sometimes it's, um, limited to the board officer, depending on if you're at middle school or high school, you seem to get less people in attendance, which is normal because our kids are, get older. So, no judgment there, it's just an observation. But it really was a really enjoyable experience and it made me realize that as a board member, I have a responsibility to, uh, service all parents and all students and all families and not just the ones that are coming to PTSA meetings because we've got lots of different situations and not everyone can make those meetings. So that's sort of where the original idea came from. I think board members would like to be able to interact with students and families, um, in a variety of ways, so we'll work out some details for next month. Mr. Bornstein, I see your hand up.
Yes, thank you. Totally agree. It's a wonderful responsibility that we have to connect to these PTSAs throughout the district. It's, um, enjoyable and it actually is a bit inspirational because you see all this volunteer effort accomplishing so much in our community. So, um, I love doing these. I, I'm wondering if there is an overarching strategy to connecting us with particular schools? For example, um, I see that I have the same, uh, middle schools that I liaison, liaised with this year and it's absolutely fine, they're great middle schools. Is the overarching strategy to cement a relationship with each of us with a particular school or to spread out, um, each of us so that we get to know more and more individuals in the community?
I think that's a great point that you bring up. I don't believe we have a strategy per se. I know sometimes these things just get copied and pasted and we have to make a few adjustments when we find, when we kind of figure out who the officers might be.
Okay.
Do you have a, a strong feeling one way or another?
Um, yeah, I wouldn't call it strong at all, but I, I do think that I lean towards, um, having me take on new schools every year, just because it expands the number of relationships that I would then have in that case.
Thank you for that. Dr. McClary?
I guess, I certainly understand what Mr. Bornstein is saying. Um, I know from my side, when you're talking about perhaps changing, um, our assignments or where we are liaisons, um, I know that when I first came on the board, I had a willingness that I accepted a few more responsibilities than some others who work, work a longer workday than I do. And so, that's where I originally had, I think, one or two more than other people did. And now personally, I feel that the responsibilities that I have currently listed are ones that I would like to continue, um, probably because some of them are not with a specific school and so I feel I can contribute to those because those are more ongoing than just being in a specific school. So, I personally would not like to change anything that I have, but I understand what you're saying.
I think they're two different things.
Okay.
Um, you and I serve on the strategic planning, um, committee and I hope, and I don't put that in the same category as a school, for example, or a PTSA. Um, so, I stand by my point, but I agree with yours as well, so if that's.
All right. And move on to the next item because this was just a discussion item and we can continue that discussion at our next meeting if we, um, aren't happy with changes that we work out. Mrs. Carey, can you mark down adding SEPSA, um, for discussion purposes for next month too? Thank you. Okay.
Can I ask one question for clarification?
Sure.
Um, the Erie County Association of School Boards, uh, has designation for alternates. It's been my understanding and maybe I misunderstand it, so I'm asking for clarification. Uh, are the alternates required to go to those meetings along with the, the main representative?
Who are you asking? You're asking?
I guess I'm opening it generically. I always assume that they are supposed to because I, my understanding is that the, uh, the topics are, uh, in-depth enough that, uh, you know, they don't want to rehash them if things go up for a vote. Uh, I know when I'm there at those meetings, they, they certainly put out the name tags for, for the alternate and the, uh, original person and, uh, the other districts tend to have both representation there as well, but I'm not sure if that's the policy or if that's just been.
Okay.
The accepted way or, or what?
Perhaps, um, Mrs. Carey, if you could possibly give ECASB a call within the next month and find out what their preference is?
Yes, will do.
Mrs. Vansley, did you have something you wanted to add to that?
I was just going to say, I am the board alternate for the budget and finance. I have not attended because of the word alternate. Mr. Mecca is the representative, he goes and represents the district. If he doesn't, I would be the first person as the alternate to attend. So I would like to have that discussion because I have a feeling Erie County is going to say, sure, their preference is for both people to attend. Um, and then I would need to have a discussion as alternate. That would be my fourth or fifth obligation, which is driving out to West Seneca and that is very time-consuming. I believe as long as we have a board representative, that should really suffice. Just my opinion.
Mr. Meyer?
Yeah, I would just, I, I, and I'm not an alternate to any of these, but I would just echo what Suzanne just said. Uh, I think if you have board presence there, that's sufficient, uh, because the alternate really only has to step in if the primary person can't, can't be there. I also think it's a decision for us to make, uh, and I think if they want both there, that they should stop using the word alternate because to me, that suggests they're the alternative, so.
Mrs. Beeger?
Just one other note about, um, making sure that the load is fair and I know with elections, there's been an adjustment to audit committee and I feel like that's one less thing that I will be doing now, so I, as we shift roles, I'm happy to take on something else, whether it be high middle, but I know Mr. Mecca's not here, so that may be something we have to discuss towards our next meeting, but I just wanted to note that, um, that I do think it's important that everybody has a fair load and one of mine has been shifted off, so I'd be happy to take another school. But we'll have to discuss with Mr. Mecca and see his preference too.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Sure.
Moving on to the work of the board, um, I just want to make sure everyone's taken a moment to really review this. This is a joint code of conduct for school boards and superintendents. It's, um, really just a really well-worded document of how we should operate and treat each other here at the board table and in between meetings as well. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve and adopt the work of the Board of Education as presented? Mrs. Vansley, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Lemay? Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, motion carried unanimously. Item B, media guidelines. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve and adopt the Williamsville Central School District Media Guidelines as presented? Mr. Bornstein, thank you, second. Dr. McClary? Any discussion? All in favor? Motion, uh, I'm sorry, opposed, abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Item C, principles for order of controversial meetings. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve and adopt the principles for order of controversial meetings as presented? Mr. Lemay, thank you, is there a sec, a second? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Beeger? Any discussion? Mr. Meyer?
Just real, real quick and maybe Dr. Martzloff, you might be able to answer this. And going through this protect, particular section of our agenda, I just want to verify, are these the same as the, the ones that in the past we've had on our agendas at these reorg meetings?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed or abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item D, school visitation guidelines. We also have this as a discussion item. We will discuss this. Now, there is a proposal in there with assigned, with school visits. The reason why it's a discussion this month instead of an action item is a few points I just want to share with you. So we currently have a process where we aim to get three board members at each school visit throughout the year. And if we're being honest, we have to say that that's been a little bit of a challenge. Because many of us are working and have to get to work. The breakfast is always enjoyable. It's always a, you know, a very enjoyable occasion. But on the downside, the staff are being asked to come in early. Mrs. Carey has to get up at crazy hours to set up. And it's sometimes difficult for Board of Education members to stay past the actual breakfast and go on and do a tour, which can actually be very beneficial to see the work of the district in action and to see the children, which is really what we're about. We also now have meetings three times during the year with the WTA Executive Board and a committee of the Board of Education two times? Okay, I'm sorry about that. Two times during the year, which provides an opportunity for the teachers' union to bring forth any concerns and do some problem solving with the board and superintendent present. So one possibility might be to have sort of an open house idea, open house concept, where there might be an elementary, middle school, and high school open house concept. Where you could visit perhaps a couple elementary schools in one day and go and see the school. And there could be a reason for, for a visit. So perhaps it might be to see how technology is being implemented or to see how, see examples of the readers and writers workshop. We get these wonderful presentations and these reports that are given to us that we know take a tremendous amount of preparation and time. It's nice, in my opinion, to be able to go then and say, we received this report. We were told during a formal presentation that this is what's happening. Isn't it nice to go and see it with our own eyes? So that's, I'm just throwing that out there as an idea. And I wanted to open up the discussion on school visits as a discussion for you to see if there is a desire to change while we're currently doing it or to keep it the same. And I want to include Dr. Martzloff in that discussion after I hear from members of the board. I'm gonna start on this side. This time it worked out.
Yeah, thank you, Teresa. I, I think it's great to look at other options and possibilities. So thanks for bringing this one to the table. I personally like the school visits and think we should keep them as is. And maybe I don't recall exactly. I think we've done a pretty good job of getting three people for each of the visits. I think I've gone to a good number of them. And just in terms of my own perception and looking at, you know, I'm on this board for three years at a time. Same with anyone else. And over the course of those three years, you know, my, my mindset has been, well, I'd like to make sure I make it to each school at some point during, during my term. And I think right now I'm on a good trajectory to do that. But I just think it spaces things out and allows for board members to have a nice interaction, you know, with the, with the school staff, teachers, administration, and everyone there. So I've enjoyed them, so I'd like to keep them the same.
Thank you. Dr. McClary?
I was thinking that I personally like the idea of possibly changing it to the during the day quotes kind of thing. Because realistically, I think if someone is available, there are ten individuals on the board. Many of them, us, work starting early. And so it kind of eliminates people from being able to go to a building meeting that starts at eight o'clock. So it, it, in one sense, really doesn't matter when or what we do in each building because certain individuals are not available, whether it's eight o'clock or whether it's one o'clock with the chance to walk around and, and see a specific classroom. So the individuals who are available, then it does change what you are able to see. And I believe going around during the school day and having an opportunity to watch things that are going on or presentations are good. It may limit, as Mr. Meyer was saying, it, it could limit the chance to stand around and casually chat with people like you would have been able to do with a, a breakfast. But if there's the ability to go into whatever's being used as a faculty room during prep time and sit there and chat with individuals that come and go, I don't know if that's a possibility. But I guess I have mixed feelings that I would like to see it broadened in general.
Mrs. Vansley?
I will keep this short. I love the idea of redesigning. I do not believe the school board visits at this point serve the purpose that it intentionally was set out. And I can say that because we've had discussions, some of us with the WTA, and many members shared with us that they are really not in favor of the breakfast. First off, a lot of money is spent on providing breakfast at each school and hardly any of it is ever touched. And teachers have voiced that they don't feel it's a very comfortable setting to have the open communication. So if that's really what we're trying to do, it's been voiced by teachers and staff that that's not the form nor the setting that they feel is beneficial to them. So I love the idea about going back, which I know you shared previously, what the board used to do. And maybe go around and do visits of the schools like Teresa explained. More together on a certain day and maybe just be able to observe and look that way. I'm not trying to meet with teachers to have them do sidebar conversations. And quite frankly, I know when I go, it's a little awkward. I mean, it's seven o'clock in the morning, they're there early. It's, you know, one more task that they have to do. The principals are trying to rally them up and, you know, all right, look who we have here. So I just don't think that it's very purposeful at this point. I would love to see it redesigned.
Mr. Lemay or Mr. Bornstein?
Thank you. Yeah, I was just thinking, I would love to hear from the school administrators and the teachers as to what is beneficial from their perspective. Because, you know, we're, we're, we, we don't want to impose ourselves on these situations, but it's a really valuable communication tool. So I guess I side with Suzanne in that we need to take the pulse of the administration and the schools to make sure that what we're doing is what we should be doing. And it might, it might be exactly what we're currently doing, but I'd like to know.
Mr. Lemay, were you?
Sure.
Speak there? Go ahead.
I, I, I'm always open to the idea of new possibilities, new ways of doing things. The old way doesn't necessarily always equate to being the best way. I know we've done this for the four years now, my fifth year here on the board. And I've found this valuable in a lot of ways. And I, I've always enjoyed the, the tours that we can go on afterwards, after we've had the socials and whatnot. But if there's more effective ways of doing this, I am open to it. I guess the only cautionary flag that I would want to, to put up would be that I want to make sure that we are somehow still visiting the schools. I do not want to eliminate that option from the table.
Absolutely. Thank you. Mrs. Beeger?
I think that it's good to open this up because I think it needs to be purposeful. I personally have really enjoyed the school visits. I like having opportunities to talk with teachers and administrators. But the structure looks really different in different schools. I don't, so we here, meet here as a board monthly. If we're going to go into a school, I think it's important to think of the purpose behind that. To go to a school, we should be seeing what's happening in the school. So I think if we're being strategic about our time there to go to a school and just see a presentation and we can actually go into classrooms and see what's happening, I'm certainly in favor for that. At the same time, I do like having the opportunity to, um, I like hearing Dr. Martzloff's words to the teachers and saying, thank you for everything you do. I like the idea of, of providing a breakfast and just giving our appreciation for teachers. I do like that piece of it. It doesn't have to be food per se. But I think it's important for us to show up at buildings at least once a year and just show that we're interested in what's happening, we're appreciative of the work you're doing, and we also want to see that work. So to follow Eric's point, perhaps the next step in this is to reach out to schools and see if they have some thoughts and ideas, because different schools are doing different things and they may want to highlight those pieces for us to come see. Some of the elementary schools have been doing a great deal of work in readers and writers workshop. We've seen that on, you know, when we're budgeting, what does that actually mean for us to go in and be able to see that? Schools may have things that they are proud of that they want to showcase. And perhaps that might be what our visit is around. It might be something that happens in the afternoon or, or even after school, or it might be in the morning. Also to follow Suzanne's point, I do want to make sure if we're coming to the schools that it's meaningful and allows us an opportunity to have conversations with teachers. I don't want it to feel micromanaged. I think it should feel comfortable and open. And so it's important when we schedule this time, if we're taking time out of our workday and they're taking their time to talk to us, that it's genuine. So for me, I want to make sure that it's genuine, that if we're in a school, that we're seeing what's happening in a school. And that perhaps the people in the school might be able to further help us on that path.
Dr. Martzloff, would you like to weigh in on this issue?
Sure. First, this certainly is not my decision to make, but I just give some experience to what we've done in the past. In the past, for example, one year, we had a school bus take us around to every school in the district on one particular day. That we visited each and every school. We also visited our school properties that day. And that was, that was good. That was helpful. But I think what ultimately ends up happening is when there's a time of potential criticism of the school board or the school district administration, it gets pointed to as you're not engaged enough with people. So there's that side of it. And then there's also, on the other side is whether it's with students, whether it's teachers, administrators, and school board members. Whenever you set up scenarios for forced social interaction, people get a little bit uncomfortable with it. So if you do it with a, you know, for example, all high schools will meet at North High School on one particular date. I don't know how many people would attend, number one. But number two is it's still gonna be a little bit perhaps uncomfortable for people. If we do do school visits, I always like the ones that have a purpose to them. Usually when we go to East High School, for example, because I see the principal in the second row, I'll just point this out. It's career day. And not only is it career day for all the students, but it's also an opportunity for when recent graduates of East High School come back and talk to seniors about what the transition is like from high school to college. And that's a critical conversation that I think goes on. So being able to observe that and see that and see all the amazing career speakers, that's beneficial for everybody, I think. So if there could be good opportunities, more good opportunities like that at each school, then I think the board should look at those good opportunities and consider attending, whether it's eight o'clock in the morning or four o'clock in the afternoon or whenever it is, so that we can have those experiences. So I'm certainly open to any solution here. But the last thing I will say is you also have to be careful if we do not, or we're not perceived to engage enough. Whenever a critical decision comes up, well, if you would have visited the schools more, you would know that we shouldn't do X, we should do Y, or we should do X and not Y, or whatever the case may be. So you just don't want to have yourself in that position where you're not perceived as getting enough information. That's all.
Thank you. And I, I'm feeling that, um, my personal opinion right now is that I would like to still visit each school. But I'd like there to be more of a focus or purpose for our visit. I, I truly appreciate when I'm at the school where I'm actually seeing students and seeing initiatives and if there's been facility improvements or if we've had some, we just had an amazing science presentation. To be able to go back then and to see that in action, I feel would be very beneficial. Dr. Martzloff, um, I believe our first visit isn't until October. Is that usually correct? Or is it right here in front of me and I'm just not seeing it?
Yes, it's.
Yes, that's correct. It's actually at the end of October.
Okay. So it might not be necessary to have a full plan by next month. But would you be able to take this back to your leadership team and sort of come up with a, an alternate proposal for us in terms of still being able to have a purpose when we visit the buildings?
Yes, we could. I don't know if I could fulfill your request to have a purpose at each meeting, at each school, at each time. There are certain ones that kind of can fall into that category very nicely. But we will certainly work to try to figure out which times of the year make the most sense for certain items, certain events, if you will, going on at each school that would be good for board members to see and be a part of.
Mrs. Beeger?
I think one thing that should be taken into consideration, if, if you are going to, your leadership team are going to administrators, is that I would like in a school visit, if there was a purpose in an event, that there, it's coupled with an opportunity for us to be able to interact with teachers if possible. So it wouldn't be just us going to an assembly and that's the visit, though I, I'd like that piece of it. But in, in schools where we've had opportunities to have conversation versus like we're there, you know, one period and certain people that are free could come and others could not, I'd love for while we're there to be accessible, so.
That's a really good point. And I think one of the things I, when I was reading through this, the expectations for the school and for the principal and so on and so forth. There are some schools we do school visits at and the staff isn't there. And it's kind of like, well, what's the point? You know, if you go, I, at certain schools we go to, I won't name any of them, they're having it as one of their faculty meetings. So that's helpful to make sure people attend. But there are other schools where it's us and maybe a couple of administrators or whoever it is having a discussion. I don't really see that as helpful or beneficial to the school board members, no offense to those principals and assistant principals.
Mrs. Vansley?
So with it, I absolutely agree. And just for the two schools that I am a liaison to, I'm thinking at Casey, they do that incredible career day where the kids are all, they pick what stations they're going to. That would be an incredible day to maybe try to schedule a board visit. Teachers are accessible, they're all around. And it's, it's like a choices day. It's absolutely great to see. And at North, what better day than the day that they have the Unified Basketball Assembly? That would be phenomenal, I think, as a board, to be able to go, to attend, to see the students in that activity as well as the teachers all there as well, just off the top of my head.
Yeah, just, just in listening to some of the comments and reflecting on them, I think, one, i- if we were to get rid of this, I think what we would find in reality is that board engagement at each school will drop significantly because you don't have these regularly kind of scheduled visits. And as to purpose, and maybe we each have our own subjective idea of what that purpose is. I think if the purpose is to really get into an engaged conversation with, let's say, teachers, for example, I think it's gonna be hard in any scenario where you're walking into their building to have a really, a full-on, in-depth conversation about what's on their mind or what their concerns are. Because, you know, they're at work. And I just think you need a much lengthier period of time and it's gotta be kind of a one-on-one conversation to really understand where they're coming from. That being said, you know, issues and concerns within their buildings have been raised, raised during these visits. One example had to do with not enough nurses onsite. And that was brought to, I believe, this board table by, I believe it was you, Mrs. Leatherbarrow. So, you know, I think there's definite value. So, you know, I think there's definite value. I think for me, the purpose is really to be engaged, learn what's going on at the school, get, you know, take the general pulse. And maybe it's because, uh, Mr. Lemay and I have, uh, slightly more flexible schedules in the morning, so oftentimes me and Mr. Lemay, uh, we stay after when we go on these tours. And I gotta tell you, there's a lot of value in those because, uh, I recall, one of them, we walked right into the middle of a science fair where we got to see what all the kids were doing. Uh, and I learned that they were better at science than me. It was really great. Uh, and then, you know, I got, I went to North and I saw, uh, all their facilities. I learned just how enormous North really is. And that shapes my mind when we're making decisions at the table. So I think there's a lot of value to going to these, uh, and I think it's good to keep it on the calendar. Um, and then in terms of, and I, I thought you brought up a good point, I think it was you, Teresa, about the breakfast and the fact that nobody touches it except for maybe a few people who don't leave the table. They just eat, but it could be anything. It could be coffee. I, I'm not there for breakfast, really. Um, and in terms of, you know, how the schools want to use it, I think we already kind of allow for flexibility because as, uh, Dr. Martslove touched on, you know, you go to different schools and it's a different feel and a different process. And I think they should have that flexibility to adjust for their building, their schedules, and what they want to make out of their meeting with us. Um, but I've gotten value out of each and every one of them, so I think, I think we should keep it on the schedule. But, uh, I, I certainly support the idea of going to each school and seeing what they think about it.
Thank you, everyone, for weighing in and just for a point of clarity. I absolutely support continuing to visit each school throughout the year. I'm just looking for, um, feedback in terms of what our purpose is while we're there and what we would like to see while we are there. But I absolutely support us continuing to visit each school. So that was a discussion item. We're going to go on to our calendar. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve and adopt the Board of Education meeting calendar as presented? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Is there a second? Mr. Borenstein, thank you. Is there any discussion on the school calendar?
None on the calendar.
Yep, seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Right, last year the board set two retreat dates. There are a couple tentative dates being proposed, um, for us to have one in December and one in March. There's also been some, um, discussion that I've had with individuals about the possibility of going down to just one retreat. So I want to just have a few minutes, we're not gonna have a lengthy discussion on this, but just a few minutes about whether you prefer to have one or two. Mrs. Van Sis?
I would like to discuss and propose that we go to one board retreat per year. Um, I just believe at this point, number one, we're remaining as the same board. I believe that it would be more effective by having one retreat. Um, number one, it would be definitely more cost-effective. And another benefit is perhaps we can shoot for a hundred percent attendance. So I would love to see one board retreat, um, thinking maybe sometime in January.
Any other discussion on other, having one retreat versus two? I do agree with Mrs. Van Sis that, um, if we're going to have these retreats, it's really important that we have everyone in attendance and we should consider the cost to put on the event as well. Mr. Meyer?
I, I agree. It's a, a good goal to have everyone there. And, uh, I hope every time we have them that, that'll be the case. But I, I also support the idea of having one retreat.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Mrs. Beeger?
Uh, I support one retreat as well. Uh, I'm not certain, but I think that that is practice of many other school boards, that they just have one retreat as opposed to two. Um, given all of the other activities that, that we do and, and other, um, commitments that we have as board members. I, I think, I'm in support of that and I also like the timeline of, uh, January of where to do that because it's halfway through the year. It's a good time to reflect on where we are so far and, and what we want to work on for the end of the year. So if we are going to do a retreat, that seems like a really good time. Maybe we're not as busy with, with, um, other things where, like these December dates that are tentative on here, um, make me a little nervous. But January feels a little more comfortable and just a good time for us and our work to come together and retreat.
Anyone else want to weigh in on that issue? Mr. Mecca, welcome.
Uh, thank you. Um, I, I like the idea of keeping two retreats. Uh, this is my opinion.
Dr. McClary?
I was just gonna be slightly flippant that January's a good time, but I would suggest we make sure we have a snow date also listed.
Okay, thank you. Going on to our next item. I lost my spot here. Where are we? Thank you. So last year the board set two community forum dates. Please look at your calendars and we will try to set these dates. November sixteenth and April twenty-fifth.
Have we also determined which schools? Because obviously the first year we had all three, so there were three schools. And last year we had two at two schools, so we would need to also make a decision at which of the two schools.
Right. Well, I think that this is listed as a discussion item on the agenda, so I think just being able to sort of say if these dates are good or not is a starting point. And then we can give it back to Dr. Martslove to work with his building principals to decide which schools would be available for these dates. Right, so this is a discussion item, so just put those dates in there and, um, we can do some planning between now and next month. Item eighteen, oh, go ahead. This is just discussion.
I know.
Oh, go ahead.
Um, the November date happens to be the same day that Erie County Association is having its advocacy workshop, whether that matters to anyone or not, but I'm stating that.
Good catch. Thank you. We will have to look for another Saturday in the fall if that date wouldn't, couldn't be a conflict. Okay. All right, now we're going to move on to our cons- consent agenda approval. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, agenda items? Nineteen personnel, twenty business, and twenty-one special needs and student activities as presented? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Is there a second? Mrs. Beeger, any discussion? Lemay, you have your hand up for discussion?
Uh, two questions I had, um, under item twenty. The first one was, uh, twenty J, the auditor's report. The claims auditor report, uh, it seemed that this particular period, we discovered an excess of an alarming amount of purchasing errors compared to previous months and/or years. Is there something new that's occurred? Or has something changed that, that explains these discrepancies this time?
Mr. Maturski, would you like to comment on that?
Certainly. Uh, there really were three items going on in this, this month's report. Um, there were a couple of checks that were printed that, uh, we found that there were errors in the amounts and that was corrected, and that's one of the functions of the claims auditor. Uh, the other item, we had what we call confirming purchase, purchase orders, where the invoices received in the department or the school had not put in the purchase order. So we get a report, um, from the claims auditor and the business office files up with that school to make sure that they are following our purchasing policy, which is purchase orders first. And then, uh, you would get your, your product and then the invoices. And then the third item was really related to, um, the, uh, exception reports on addresses. And what essentially happens there is that, uh, you get a remittance on an invoice, the company, we have the, the company already in our system, and their address changes. So we're gonna, from a, uh, accounts payable perspective, we're gonna be looking at those addresses more closely.
Okay, thank you. My second question was on, uh, regards to the donations from TOPPS. There was no amount listed. It was just a blanket approval or is there supposed to be?
Yeah, we get donations throughout the year from TOPPS.
Throughout the year, okay. That's what I was guessing, so I just wanted clarification. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Dr. Martslove, would you like to introduce our newly appointed AD Assistant Principal for East High School?
Thank you, Mrs. Leatherbarrow. Uh, I'd like to introduce, uh, to the board. He's been very patient sitting in the front row. He cannot wait to come to the podium to speak to the board and give his thirty-five-minute speech. Nick Sahana is our new, uh, Assistant Principal and Athletic Director of the High School.
Thank you, Dr. Martslove. Uh, I'd like to thank Dr. Martslove, the interview committee, uh, the Williamsville Board of Education for giving me this opportunity. I'm very excited to work with the wonderful staff and faculty at Williamsville East. It's a very exciting time for myself and my family. Um, so thank you again for this opportunity and go Flames. Thank you, guys.
Nick, is there anyone you want to introduce while you're at the podium?
Yes, yeah, might as well, right? Uh, this is my beautiful wife, Lisa. Uh, she's also a teacher. She works down at Pioneer. Um, so she's great. Uh, she's been my support and backbone through, through all this with me. Um, we, uh, we have two beautiful girls at home who we've thought best to leave with, with my parents, so, uh, they're, they're washing them nicely and, and whatnot for us. So, um, yeah, thank you guys very much and I really do appreciate this and I'm looking forward to, to working with everybody. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thank the following retirees for their service to the district. Joseph Amato, Transportation Bus Driver, sixteen years and seven months of service. Patrick Esford, Transportation Bus Driver, thirty-one years and three months of service. William Gekel, Transportation Bus Driver, fifteen years and four months of service. Jane Ozog, Transit Middle Health Aid, twenty-two years and eight months of service. Daniel Phillips, High Middle Cleaner, four years and ten months of service. Paula Romano, Transportation Bus Driver, twenty-eight years and nine months of service. And Alex Tekatov, Mill Middle Head Custodian, forty-three years and five months of service. Congratulations to our retirees. Moving on to item number twenty-two, the approval of our minutes. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the June eighteenth regular board meeting minutes? Dr. McClary, thank you. Mr. Lemay, second. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the June twenty-fourth special board meeting minutes? Mr. Lemay, thank you. Is there a second? Dr. McClary, are there any corrections or additions to these minutes? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Moving on to our president's report. We had three fantastic high school graduations this, um, past weekend. I know several of you were able to attend all three of them. My daughter graduated from North and I want to thank Dr. Martslove for surprising me with the opportunity to hand her her diploma. I thought I would just shake her hand. I didn't think I'd get to hand it to her. So that was truly a special moment for me and very joyful. Is there another board member that wishes to comment on the events? I know Mr. Lemay had a daughter graduate as well. Mr. Lemay?
I was fortunate to attend all three ceremonies. I only cried at one. The sales ceremony was, was excellent, but all three were, were really great. And it's, uh, it's, it's, it's an accolade for board members to be able to see, uh, the, the fruits, um, rewards from what we do here. You know, we, we bring children in, starting in kindergarten, but to see them all the way through to the end and see them graduate and be able to shake their hands and congratulate every single one of them on stage was, I, I, I'm speechless. It's, it's, it's the, the best feeling for a board member, I think, to, to really get to that point uh, in the, in the academic year. So I want to thank all the schools and, and everybody and all the students for all the hard work for, for twelve years of academics. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all the board members that were, that attended this weekend. I know some of you attended all of them, which is a huge commitment and thank you very much for doing that. The, um, County of Erie, twenty-twenty Erie County Shared Services Meeting will be July eleventh at five-thirty PM at the Erie County Community College North Campus, and Dr. McClary will be attending. Thank you, Dr. McClary. Dr. McClary, would you like to give us a report from the Erie County Association of School Boards?
Yes, thank you. Um, at this point, I would just like to mention a few upcoming events. And on August twenty-second, there is the meeting for all presidents, vice presidents, and superintendents, meeting with Commissioner Elia. On October third is the Leadership Dinner that occurs to give, um, probably anyone on the board who's interested in going, an opportunity to meet with others throughout, um, the Erie One area. And then on October twenty-fourth through twenty-sixth is the, um, NISBA Convention. So I think at this point, those are the upcoming events.
Thank you, Dr. McClary. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to renew the board's membership for the Erie County Association of School Boards and authorize the payment of nine thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty annual membership dues? Mr. Mecca, thank you. Second, Mr. Lemay. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. In your packet, there are the names of the individuals who have, um, expressed an interest in, in attending the Western New York Law Conference. Please review those briefly. Would, would someone like to make a motion to approve the registration for the forty-first Annual Law Conference as presented? Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Second, Mr. Mecca. Is there any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Does anyone else have anything to report under Erie County Association of School Boards? Thank you. Item F, New York State School Board Association. As, uh, Dr. McClary mentioned briefly, there will be a convention. It's the one-hundredth Annual NISBA Convention, happening Thursday, October twenty-fourth through Saturday, October twenty-sixth in Rochester, New York. Item F, Authorization and Approval for Attendees at the one-hundredth Annual New York State School Board Association that I just mentioned. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the attendees authorize payment of registrations as presented? Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Second, Mr. Lemay. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Meyer?
Yes, I'm not sure. I'm just glancing over this. I thought that I said I was attending. Maybe I didn't. I'm just, just in my mind, but I'd like to add myself to the list.
This is for the one in Rochester?
Correct.
Okay. Miss Carey's got that? And I was a maybe at the last month and I am able to attend. Mr. Mecca?
If, if we approve this list tonight, is this final? Or if, uh, people can add on later, is that a possibility or, or that's it?
Um, Mrs. Carey, is there a deadline for, uh, registration?
There's a deadline. It's, uh, Jul-, I believe it's July twenty-fifth.
So we don't meet again before that, correct? So we would need to decide tonight?
And Mr. Mecca?
Board meeting's August.
Right.
That's what we would have to.
And I will add from history, from experience, that, uh, rooms and whatnot go very, very quickly the moment they open up.
I'm just not sure of my availability yet in October.
Right, well, are we ready to vote on this? All in favor? Opposed?
Teresa, just to be clear, that's with my name added? Will you amend it?
Yeah, with your name added, correct.
Okay, thank you.
What's that?
I'll confer, I will also confirm with everybody as far as attendance and staying over if you were traveling during the day because it is in Rochester.
In Rochester. I plan on just driving back and forth. Okay. All, so all in favor again, just to be clear? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion car- carries unanimously. Um, does anyone have any time? Does anyone have anything else to report under New York State School Board Association? Okay, item G, Strategic Planning Update. Information regarding the strategic planning. I'd like to ask Dr. McClary or Mr. Bornstein if they would like to give a brief report. Would anyone like to comment?
I don't think there's any uh further information to report from last time. We met in June, we scheduled monthly meetings starting in September and um I'm really looking forward to this process and working with everyone involved.
Thank you.
I would, I would just add that um myself and I believe Mr. Bornstein are definitely planning on making sure that we bring information back to the board and ask for input as we go along from the board and so forth.
Thoroughly noted, thank you. Our next item is the Review of Board Goals and Self-Evaluation. This is just going to be a brief review. In the packet, there is um a chart that has um final report column completed. And we also are using our Super Eval program this year for the first time to conduct a more formal self-board evaluation. And uh I believe at the close of the day, not everyone had quite finished, correct, Mr. Lemay? Okay, so we are waiting on two board members and I want to give them an opportunity to make, to um complete that portion of the board evaluation. So, I'd like to just have us go back to that and we can have some further review and discussion at our August meeting. And when, once that's finalized, I would like to be able to make that um accessible for all board members to be able to view and the community as well, so that we can remain transparent. Right, uh item number twenty-four, our superintendent's report. Community update, Dr. Mertzlove, would you like to give your community update, please?
Thank you, Mrs. Leatherboro. It's already been mentioned, uh we had our retirement reception uh a couple of weeks ago for all of our retiring teachers and staff members across the district. We are losing a grand total of eight hundred and eighty-seven years of experience uh with all the retirements that are taking place, but certainly is a joyful event. Um, people are excited to be able to retire and uh we hope that they won't go too far uh from the district as we sure could use uh some more substitutes if they so desired to uh apply for those jobs. Um, we also had, as was mentioned earlier, three outstanding graduations. Um, as I complete my eighth year in the district, I can't think of a time where I've been more impressed with the degree of organization uh and management and student centeredness of all three graduations. Uh, certainly, Mr. Boardman at South High School, uh Mr. Thomas at North High School, and Mr. Swatlin at East High School did a tremendous job putting it all together and making it so meaningful uh for our students and I'm very appreciative of their efforts to do that. Uh, so really a terrific weekend, uh a great chance to shake hands with about nine hundred students uh who are going on uh on the springboard of uh new uh things they're going to try to accomplish in their life, so congratulations to the class of two thousand nineteen and we look forward to hearing more about their successes in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Mertzlove. Now for our revised policy, second reading. Would someone like to make a motion to take the revised policy thirteen thirty-six, duties for the extra classroom activity fund, central treasurer and faculty auditor, and fifty-five twenty, extra classroom activity fund from the table for a second reading and adoption? Mr. Lemay, thank you, is there a second? Dr. McClary? All in favor, to remove it from the table? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion for the second reading and adoption of the revised policies thirteen thirty-six? Duties for the extra classroom activity fund, central treasurer and faculty auditor, and fifty-five twenty, extra classroom activity fund as presented? Mr. Lemay, thank you, is there a second? Mrs. Bieger, thank you. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Okay, revised policy, first reading. Policy number eighty-two forty-three, animals in the school for instructional purposes. Would someone like to make a motion for the first reading of revised policy eighty-two forty-three, animals in the school for instructional purposes as presented? Mr. Bornstein, thank you, is there a second? Mrs. Van Sis, is there any discussion on this policy? Mr. Lemay?
I have two comments on this policy. Uh, first one's a question. The policy currently states that parents and guardians must provide written permission to give consent for their children. Uh, my first question here is, is this actually the law requiring us to do this? Because it would seem to me that it would make more sense to do the reverse of this, maybe have parents opt out of doing this, because it may be difficult to get, especially if we're bringing a uh therapy dog or animal into the building to get the entire buildings worth of students to sign off on this?
Where are you looking at this, Mr. Lemay? So, I'm looking at the same
Oh.
whole policy on here.
It's forty-two forty-three, I, you're gonna have to give me a few moments to find the actual wording in it here.
You mean eighty-two forty-three, correct?
Eighty-two forty-three, yep.
Mr. Lemay, since this is only the first reading, would it be possible for us to go back and answer that next month?
Yep, that's fine. I I want that uh possibly answered before we actually make this policy. Um, and then my other question and comment on this was also that I noticed in the new policy that it talks about the therapy dog's owner must be an employee of the school. Um, and I actually had two concerns with that, one being uh well, the obvious is why? Do does the employee of the actual school have to be the owner of the animal? My concern there is is that it would reduce the amount of uh available opportunities. At the very least, in that portion of that statement, maybe it should be an employee of the district, but then that actually leads into my second question of why does it even have to be an employee? Why does, you know, if we're gonna bring in therapy animals, uh therapy dogs, whatever, what are the chances that our thousand-plus employees actually own certified therapy animals that are gonna be able to come into the district? I'm I'm envisioning that maybe one or two might own them certified, so that it might make more sense that this policy is written in such a way that allows us to bring in outside sources as long as they provide all the documentation as specified in the policy?
We'll look into it as well
Okay.
for next time before it's uh put up for approval.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Just for a point of clarity, um this is the motion for the first reading, correct?
Correct.
Alright, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Now I'm going to take a vote to table this for our next meeting, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Would someone like to make a motion to table the revised policy eighty-two forty-three, animals in the school for a second reading and adoption at the August thirteenth regular board meeting? Mr. Lemay, second, Mr. Bornstein? All in favor? Thank you, opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Finance. Item number twenty-five, the year-end donation report is in board docs. Does anyone have any questions on the year-end donation summary? Mr. Lemay?
I see it summarized uh just in paragraph form. Was there intended to be a summary, maybe a a spreadsheet or something along those lines to that maybe was missing or was this the summary as presented by category?
No, this is generally what we
Okay.
write to the board, yeah.
And and the agenda item is to present the summary as opposed to a report?
Correct.
Any other questions? Thank you, item twenty-six, legislation. Are there any legislative matters that anyone would like to discuss? Item twenty-seven, would someone like to make a motion to approve and adopt the textbooks as presented? Mr. Lemay, is there a second? Mrs. Bieger, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you, motion carries unanimously. Item twenty-eight, personnel. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the agreement between the superintendent and the CSEA, Williamsville Schools Custodial Unit sixty-seven fifty-five, local number eighty-eight sixty-eight as presented? Mr. Lemay, miss, second, Mr. Mecca, thank you. Is there any discussion on this? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. District facilities, item number twenty-nine. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the state environmental quality review as presented? Mrs. Van Sis, thank you, is there a second? Mrs. Bieger, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Special needs and student activities. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the membership for the Committee on Special Education and the Committee on Preschool Special Education as presented? Mr. Meyer, thank you, second. Dr. McClary, is there any mis-, is there any discussion, excuse me? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the appointment of impartial hearing officers, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year as presented? Mr. Lemay, second? Mrs. Bieger, thank you, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carried unanimously. Okay, so Committee of the Whole, there was some, um, in our last meeting, there was a discussion in Committee of the Whole, I believe regarding the special education and special needs uh activity summary report, so we need to come to some consensus on that. Do we want to have changes to the summary? It doesn't have to be a formal motion, is it just a directive of how we would like to see it presented? Or do we, are we comfortable with leaving it alone? I know, Mr. Meyer, you had expressed wanting to think about it for the month.
I just want to make sure we're talking about the same, this is the issue that uh you raised, Mrs. Kanzuzo, is that?
Right.
Okay. Yeah, and I thought about it uh further and I have no objection to it, so.
No objection to which?
To Mrs. Kanzuzo's uh suggestion.
Mrs. Van Sis?
Again, I will just reiterate that I have no objection um doing that summary page. Not being tied into that, it it's just extra work. Um, our job is to look at the listing and approve the plans set forth. Not the summary or that additional piece, so I would like to save the district that extra time because it's just not a necessary component, um especially in our role and responsibilities.
Mr. Mecca?
I I also agree that um we don't need the summary as it's done now, um but I would like information in there uh regarding the number of outstanding due process cases that we have going on so that we can keep track of um situations that are difficult situations for the, for uh special education where where the parent does not agree with the uh committee decision, so that we're aware of how many of those situations exist.
The board agree with wanting the uh due process hearing report? Uh, Mrs. Van Sis?
I actually wouldn't recommend that on a monthly basis. I think it would be better served if we were maybe given that um maybe twice a year even, every six months or the half year and at the end of the year. I don't think we need to micromanage as much as that on a monthly basis, but I I think that report is very beneficial um to oversee that, but sometimes these things will take time and so if one's being wrapped up, I think monthly would be a little too detailed. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kanzuzo? Okay.
Any other feedback? Mecca?
I I'd be okay with it uh quarterly, though, I, not not by, not biannually. I'd like to see it at least every three months.
What's the difference between quarterly? Sounds good to me. Alright, does anyone have any other matters to discuss under Committee of the Whole? Thank you. Is there any correspondence that anyone wishes to discuss? We will now conduct our second public expression with the same rules as outlined for our first public expression. Anyone wishing to address the podium or to address the board should go to the podium and sign in, please, at this time. Alright, our next regular board meeting will be held on Monday, August thirteenth at seven PM here in District Office.
Tuesday.
Oh, sorry, we're gonna fix that. Thank you. Our next regular board meeting will be held Tuesday, August thirteenth at seven PM here in District Office. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the organizational board meeting? Mr. Meyer, thank you, is there a second? Mrs. Bieger, all in favor? Opposed, abstentions, motion carries unanimously. Good night, everyone.